That we don't have a quorum here in the meeting room. Mayor. Did you hear me?
I'm hearing you.
You hear that we don't have a quorum, where you can see that.
Do you and Commissioner Bore?
Yes, sir.
Are we expecting anybody else to be present?
I'm looking for.
We've not been advised by anybody that they were not attending, so, uh, you know, yeah, can you make a couple of phone calls and see if Commissioner Jones or Commissioner Campbell can come or Commissioner Rawls, uh, this is CRA, right? So any of those would be, would be available.
Me too.
I don't either. So, uh, Mayor, do you have Commissioner Rawls' phone number that you might be able to call him? I don't have it.
Yeah, I'll, um, yeah, I can call him. Yeah, Commissioner Rawls is gonna log in.
Did you say he's gonna log in, Mayor?
Yes, sir, I just spoke to him.
Of course, we have to have three present, um. Actually, we have to have four present, or our total membership is seven.
Yeah, we gotta have four present.
We gotta have four present.
We got one vacancy, you only guess, you got six members, so. You got a four, still, still gotta have four.
The city, uh, city attorney has just walked in, so I'll defer to her now regarding quorum requirements.
It's still gonna be four, it's gonna be four regardless.
But you, do you get any response? Okay, thank you. Madam City Attorney, we are talking about quorum requirements since we're not operating under the relaxed rules of the COVID emergency declaration, we have to have a quorum of people present and everyone else can appear electronically, so that's what we're waiting for right now. Do you, you agree?
Yes, I agree.
For those of you who are here in attendance during the COVID declaration of emergency, the governor suspended the rule which required you to have a quorum of people present in person, everyone could attend electronically and, and it would count. But when that last emergency declaration expired, then that, that rule expired. We have Commissioner Campbell walking in now, so we need one more. Sunny, uh, I mean, Lauren, did you try Commissioner Jones? No response?
I left a message.
Okay, let me text him, just see. We would have enough for the regular commission meeting budget workshop with the three of you, President and the mayor on the phone. We'll be okay for the city commission budget workshop, but without one more, we're.
I mean, we are in the process of properly table, tabling this and we schedule it.
Well, I've got a text in to Commissioner Jones to see if he's, uh, able to make it. So he would be our fourth.
So Commissioner Rawls can't make it at all?
I was understand, if I understood the mayor correctly, Commissioner Rawls was gonna zoom in, if I understood the mayor correctly.
Right, but is, I wonder if there's any way that he could make it if, if we're not able to touch base with Commissioner Jones, that if, is there some kind of physical restriction where he couldn't be here or something? Yeah, we, we, we're having some difficulties with.
Mayor, did, uh, in your conversation?
It sounded like he was at work, can you, uh, can someone please send Commissioner Rawls the, um, email him to log in for the meeting?
Sure, we can. But we can't really go forward without him.
I mean, I can.
I've texted him. I've not got a response back.
I called and left a message.
Can we, um, can we just, let's, let's go, let's take a.
I'm here.
Before we get started, let's, let's give like two minutes, let's take a two-minute break and, um, Mr. Holmes, you can share, let's go mute, Mr. Holmes, you can share the information I just shared with you.
I can share with the commission what you just shared to me?
Yeah. Just, we'll take a, we'll go two minutes, we'll go, we'll take a two-minute break and then let me know when you.
I'm sorry. From June twenty twenty-two, uh, to June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, one-thirty PM, July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, nine AM. A second budget workshop will be held on July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, at three PM. The meetings will be held at City Hall located two zero one North Second Street. Moving forward into our agenda items, presentation, the discussion of the overall budget for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, Ms. Shank.
Thank you, Mayor. I took all of the comments and suggestions of the CRA board and I did put all the notes into the budget items as well as rebalance the fund. So what you have before you is a balanced tax increment fund or CRA as we also call it. It is one million, seven hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars. And as you can see, I didn't make any changes to the millage because at this time that's tentative, so with the county at a flat millage and then the city keeping the six point four as well, those are your anticipated revenues. And then your cash balance forward since we were able to get the audit numbers in and then also estimate what we'll be spending in fiscal year twenty-two, we are carrying forward one million, eighty thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. So the first fund that we'll go over is downtown. And as you can see, I made a few adjustments, so we put ten thousand dollars in professional services as that project was completed. And then we updated to two festivals and one cost share for your festival line. And then we updated the recruitment grant to reflect the two remaining recruitment projects that we have in fiscal year twenty-two that we will carry forward into next year. And then the electronic gateway sign sixty thousand is allotted. And then public art was the other change in your operating fund, or sorry, in your operating expenses. And I just line item that to reflect the carry forward projects and then the touch-ups.
That's what it rules.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, moving into transfers, um, originally we had just one firework event at the request of the board, we changed it to two firework events for a total of twenty thousand. And the other change is to the street skate project, which is anticipated to be about five hundred thousand dollars for a contribution from TIF. So for total of the downtown department, you have nine hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. And in the reserves, that leaves a balance of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So still a very healthy reserve in case we incur any additional costs for capital projects or, um, any of the sidewalk repairs or anything else in the operating that may go over. Do you have any questions about downtown?
Any questions as it relates to central business? No, I don't have any. Any questions for those in Zoom, Commissioner Rawls?
No, I'm good.
All right, sorry about that. Let's go ahead and get started. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is our July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two commission meeting at this time. We're gonna have my invocation and pledge. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mulberry, it may be on the, on the road.
I'm sorry, Chairman Mulberry, we need us an invocation.
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you once again for this day, we give you praise and glory for your goodness. We ask God for your divine visitation and presence to be upon us. We ask for the wisdom and guidance and whatever we undergo to do for your glory. We pray God that you would touch each and every person, even in this season, God, where we're beginning to vote and make choices and decisions. You know, God, the persons that you will have to serve for such a time as this, we pray God that you will bless even now. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayor Terrell Hill. Here.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones. Not present for the record.
The red flag is not present.
Thank you. Commissioner Jeff Rawls.
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum, sir.
Thank you.
Let your record reflect, Sunny, that we're in person, so you have a quorum in person and one commissioner attending electronically.
Also, we're moving on to item number two, which are public comments, public comments will be limited to three minutes. No actual retaking of topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? If you're here, please fill out the yellow speaker's card in the back of the room and bring it forward at this time. Now, open the floor for public comment. Seeing no one here for public comment. We'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll now move on, just before we move on, let me go ahead and just get the pink elephant out of the room, it's probably real big right now. Um, I'm recovering from COVID and I just got cleared today. Um, so my voice is gonna be weak, my wind is gonna be shorter. And, um, we're gonna move forward, duty calls, we do what we have to do to make this stuff work. The notice for today says you're hereby notified that a budget work, workshop of the community redevelopment agency has been rescheduled for June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. That's not, uh, right there. That's not it.
It is, sir. It says this.
Second page.
A second budget workshop will be held.
I'm sorry, from June twenty-twenty-two, uh, to June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, one-thirty PM, July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, nine AM. A second budget workshop will be held on July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, at three PM. The meetings will be held at City Hall located two zero one North Second Street. Moving forward into our agenda items, presentation, the discussion of the overall budget for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, Ms. Shank.
Thank you, Mayor. I took all of the comments and suggestions of the CRA board and I did put all the notes into the budget items as well as rebalance the fund. So what you have before you is a balanced tax increment fund or CRA as we also call it. It is one million, seven hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars. And as you can see, I didn't make any changes to the millage because at this time that's tentative, so with the county at a flat millage and then the city keeping the six point four as well, those are your anticipated revenues. And then your cash balance forward since we were able to get the audit numbers in and then also estimate what we'll be spending in fiscal year twenty-two, we are carrying forward one million, eighty thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. So the first fund that we'll go over is downtown. And as you can see, I made a few adjustments, so we put ten thousand dollars in professional services as that project was completed. And then we updated to two festivals and one cost share for your festival line. And then we updated the recruitment grant to reflect the two remaining recruitment projects that we have in fiscal year twenty-two that we will carry forward into next year. And then the electronic gateway sign sixty thousand is allotted. And then public art was the other change in your operating fund, or sorry, in your operating expenses. And I just line item that to reflect the carry forward projects and then the touch-ups.
That's what it rules.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, moving into transfers, um, originally we had just one firework event at the request of the board, we changed it to two firework events for a total of twenty thousand. And the other change is to the street skate project, which is anticipated to be about five hundred thousand dollars for a contribution from TIF. So for total of the downtown department, you have nine hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. And in the reserves, that leaves a balance of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So still a very healthy reserve in case we incur any additional costs for capital projects or, um, any of the sidewalk repairs or anything else in the operating that may go over. Do you have any questions about downtown?
Any questions as it relates to central business? No, I don't have any. Any questions for those in Zoom, Commissioner Rawls?
No, I'm good. The same thing, whatever the other day.
No questions.
All right, moving on to South Historic District. Audit expenses were changed, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that, audit expenses were changed to reflect, um, the different cost share that's in the entire fund. Originally, I just budgeted one-third in each area, which I was informed that we kinda split that cost differently based on the amount of funds that come into the districts. So that was updated and it actually decreased the audit expense in the South and North Districts. Building improvement grant, we kept that at fifty thousand and then capital outlay at the request of the board, we line item fifteen thousand for sidewalks and thirty-five thousand for other capital outlay. So that was also updated as well. And those were the only changes we had in the South District. For the South District, there's a total operating and capital budget of two hundred and fourteen thousand, thirty dollars. And that leaves eighty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars in reserves. Any questions?
The, um, the three thousand for, for festivals, that is the porch fest, correct?
Or. I'm sorry, for festivals. Um, well, the maximum, I believe, is twenty-five hundred that you can do on cost share. But we, um, when we discussed it in the last budget workshop, we said to just leave it at the three thousand because it's a cost share program, we didn't want to um, not have someone else apply if they had a small festival event that they wanted to use, so the consensus was to leave it at the three thousand.
I think the, the question was that for the porch fest on, only, what is just really, is just in general, right, is just three thousand for whichever festival.
Correct.
We haven't had any other festivals, we only had the porch, porch fest and there was no others submitted.
That's correct, and it was twenty, a little over twenty-four hundred dollars this year. Um, but it, it is a cost share program, so they still have to go through the application process each year.
So it's, it's an anticipation of porch fest as the marquee event, but it's not earmarked.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Moving on to the North Historic District. This one, you also see the decrease in the audit expense. And the general capital improvement, um, we bumped it up to the fifty thousand. And so for a total of the North District, we have four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and, oh no, I'm sorry, that's the reserve. We have a hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars and that leaves sixty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars in reserves. On page four. Yeah, I'm sorry, I know I was reading the bottom, so the North Historic Department total is the hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred. And then you'll see in the reserve line, they have sixty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars left. And that gives us a balanced fund for the TIF fund.
Any questions, any questions on north?
I have none.
Any questions for the guys? And I, uh, so, uh, yeah, if you have a question, Miss, whoever, as the representative for North is coming up. Since you weren't here last time, you can come up and ask your question.
Annie Swetlek, five eleven North Third Street in Palatka. I have a question about, um, the general capital improvements. That's a huge difference, thirty thousand, what is that for?
So the board discussed at the last meeting doing sidewalks and road repairs and line iteming those specific things for each district.
Okay, so sidewalk repair?
As well as road repairs.
But it hasn't been much guidance as it relates to what's wanted from the, the North Historic, well, from the Northern TIF district, not the North Historic District. And so there was money allocated for sidewalks, uh, for sidewalk repair throughout at the last meeting with no one here and no additional information. What we wanted to do is make sure that we allocated funding so that there will be capital improvements and visual aesthetics within the districts and sidewalks is one of the, uh, much needed ways in which to look at that. And so that's why we increased so that there will be, um, some upgrades planned for the coming year. Are there any other projects, there's an opportunity to bring those forward throughout the year. And if it's, uh, deemed viable by the agency. And I, uh, so, uh, yeah, if you have a question, Miss, so folks who ever, as the representative for North is coming. Since you weren't here the last time, you can come up and ask your question.
Annie Swetlek, five eleven North Third Street in Palatka. I have a question about, um, the general capital improvements. That's a huge difference, thirty thousand. What is that for?
So the board discussed at the last meeting doing sidewalks and road repairs and line iteming those specific things for each district.
Okay, so sidewalk repair?
As well as road repairs.
But it hasn't been much guidance as it relates to what's wanted from the, the North Historic, well, from the Northern TIF district, not the North Historic District. And so there was money allocated for sidewalks, uh, for sidewalk repair throughout at the last meeting with no one here. And no additional information. What we wanted to do is make sure that we allocated funding so that there will be capital improvements and visual aesthetics within the districts and sidewalks is one of the, uh, much needed ways in which to look at that. And so that's why we've increased so that there will be, um, some upgrades planned for the coming year. Are there any other projects? There's an opportunity to bring those forward throughout the year. And if it's, uh, deemed viable by the agency, then it can be, there can be, it can be placed into, into the queue if necessary.
Okay. Thank you. And then there is like a balance of sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine? Is that a balance that, did you say that's for the TIF hip program?
Um, no.
Okay.
It's just in the reserves.
It's in reserves. And is such a balance carried over if nothing happens with it today?
Yes, ma'am. Um, they are specific. They can only be spent in those areas. So for instance, if we came on the cycle for the Building Improvement Grant, which actually replaced the HIP program.
Yeah.
If we had additional applicants and staff requested to pull money from reserves and align more in there. That's something that we could propose because there is a reserve balance. Same with projects as well.
But I understand these applications cannot be submitted until next year, right?
Correct. It'd have to be in the next cycle because the current cycle's closed.
I think there was only one that was submitted during the first cycle.
Yeah, I believe you said two, but one was too late with.
We got two times a year to do it.
Oh, two times a year?
You're two different cycles. So the first, you missed the first cycle, you still got the next cycle which comes up.
Can you tell me the? Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. We can get all that to you. Any other questions? Uh, at some point, you're gonna have to fill one out for me, Ms. Roach. Just give your name and address for the record.
Cheryl Roach, three twelve Dodge Street. What you just said pertaining to the capital possibly going into the new program that replaced the HIP.
You've got allocated funding, the way it's set up right now, just like what we talked about the la- at the last meeting. You've got amounts that are set. There, those are amounts that will be budgeted. There's, you can, there can always be a request to take a reserve amount, amounts, amounts in reserve and move them, no differently than what's been done historically.
Okay, uh, in the last meeting, it was stated that, um, there were quite a few applications from both the South and the Business. So, um, will that be addressed at the Monday meeting for the distribution? I mean, if there are more applications than the fifty thousand, or you just don't know at this point.
I mean, it's not, I mean, at, at the end of the day, nobody's entitled to get funded.
I do understand that, but if they're, but if they're, if the application and is qualified and if there is the possible funding there, wouldn't, wouldn't it go ahead and be allocated?
Well, if the, it's gonna be allocated based on what's budgeted.
Okay.
If there, if there's a situation where it's determined that there's a need to place additional money in the budget for it, then you go from there. The reality of it is, it's kind of like, it, it's almost like a lottery to an extent. You go in, you apply, you qualify, you get rank, you get funded. If, and there's X amount of dollars in the pot per year. If we take all the money out the pot and just spend it on, on homes, then you're gonna put yourself in a position where you're not gonna have anything to do other capital improvements. Let's just say a great opportunity came up in the future and you don't have anything in reserves. That's something that could truly benefit everybody in one fell swoop. As opposed to, um, dealing with a lot of the things that, for the most part, you look at a lot of these projects, they're deferred maintenance projects. So it's people wanting to paint houses or replace wood or do other things that, I mean, that, that can be done um, through some type of maintenance plan on your house, no different than, than what people do on their other properties who aren't inside CRA districts. But like, for example, the road paving or the, the, the crosswalks. Um, to do the brick crosswalks or to go in and redo all the streets in, in the community. If you hadn't built up a strong enough reserve at that point, you wouldn't have that. That was something that, that benefited everybody in the community. Or even looking at the infrastructure aspect of it, being able to go in and put in the new water sewer and wastewater, all the other stuff that was in there, the drainage. So it's always good to have some money left in the pot so that you can build up for the future. Uh, I mean, I, I think historically, the certain districts have just been spoiled. At the end of the day, you look at it, it's you've, we spent almost a million dollars in TIF hip programs. And so, uh, and I think people get the idea that you're just entitled to be to get some free money to go in and do whatever when your tax rate is the same as the tax rate for the guy that lives two blocks outside of your district who has a house that was built in eighteen hundreds as well. And he's not gonna get any help for what he's doing. And he pays the same six point four mils that you pay. He pays the same non-havillorm assessments that are paid there. And yet, I mean, and it's, it's, the CRA was built for purpose. And what we're seeing is the benefits of some of the program and, and we're seeing the benefits of some great owners uh, in areas like the South Historic District where property values have started to rise and the, and the homes are starting to look better. But at the end of the day, my personal opinion as one member of this agency is that we don't want to dump all the money into just TIP hip. Because if you dump all your reserves in the TIP hip, you're gonna find yourself in a situation where there's a repair or there's something that needs to be done in that district and there's nothing in the pot to go to. And that's what we don't want. What we want to do is to be able to say, hey, we've been able to be, you know, really strong with the money and have a real plan to build reserves. Now we can go look at doing something magnificent in the area, whatever that may be. And that's why there's input on a regular basis from the neighborhood associations. Maybe they'll be able to come in and say, hey, this is on our wish list. This is what we want to see. And you're able to do a lot of that stuff. So that's just, that's just the thought.
I'm sorry. You to talk so long. Um, the, the one comment I would like to make is that there is a difference in allocation between the South and the North, but the budget is still exactly the same. So, um, I think moving forward to the possibility of considering the, uh, the funding and the variance and maybe allocating more for the South. Um, and I'm, I'm not trying to sound spoiled for the record. I have never. And, and I will not, by understanding of deferred maintenance and I don't want to take advantage of the problem, but um, I did submit a list of blighted, some severely blighted homes to Sunny of, in the South District, you know, because I do feel that there is a, um, general consensus in the city and on the commission that we don't have light in our neighborhood and that we are spoiled. And you basically just said that.
Man, that's not what I said. And I don't need you, y'all need you to tell me what I said. Um, no, I don't think it's, I don't think, I definitely think there's blight in your neighborhood. I've rode through your neighborhoods and seen some blight at home. I don't think everybody participates. And I think that there's a cutoff line on perception as to what, what the neighborhood is compared to what the CRA district is. And those are two different things. And so I'd love to see more participation from, um, from some of the streets that have not historically participated or some of the residents who may need some additional help, who haven't necessarily gotten it. Uh, just a lot of houses in general.
May, may, maybe we need to allocate, um, some small funding for a, uh, you know, a campaign that's very localized and specialized to get the, uh, awareness out to people that may not even know that, um, it is available for them. You know, I mean, it is, it is a program that has been in place for many years. It certainly is, nobody in the neighborhoods is at fault in one way or the other for.
But, but that's where we got it. That's, that's where we have to change. It, this isn't a program that's been in place for many years. But what we've done is created a new program. And then, and, and because it's a new program, the only thing I would ask you is because we just, in essence, consolidated some of those programs and created new criteria, let's use this year as a test run. For what we've got in place to see, because the one thing we can always do is adjust.
No, I, I, I agree. And, and I appreciate the conversation at this point. And I hope you feel better.
We, we changed the, we changed the, uh, we changed the criteria. And, and the, and the scoring, what we, we, and there was some abuse. We are, I think if we're honest about it, there, there was some abuse. But we, then, one reason, that's one reason the criteria changed. And so that we could start to have a, a universal scoring method that worked all across the board. And it gave people an opportunity to apply. And so what I see is, let's look at it and see if it works. What are the flaws? How can we make it better? What, where there, now we can measure true benefits. Because when we measure dollar for dollar on the eight hundred and forty thousand that have been spent over those years, there wasn't a, a, a true benefit from the standpoint of going in and saying, hey, this property got forty grand. And its taxable value went up dollar for dollar. Or, you know, the return wasn't the same if you just looked at taxable value. Aesthetics, yes. And there's some intangibles that are there that you could never measure by looking at a tax bill. But let's just look at it and see if it works this time. It's, it's all brand new. The process is brand new. So we, let's just work through it. The, the great part about it is if we get to the middle of the year and figure, hey, it's working wonderful, we can always adjust. We just can't, you know, it, it's, you can adjust up, it's harder to adjust down without, you know, without there being some other issues.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the time.
That, that, that's just me talking. I'm a person. Anybody else kind of come in?
Me, that, that's something. Nothing, nothing more to say on from my.
All right, Mr. Wetlick, you gonna fill, you gonna fill one of those cards out for me before you leave, right? All right, come on. Thanks, Ms. Roach.
Annie Swetlek, five eleven North Third Street, Palatka. Um, you said, uh, Mr. Mayor, that the criteria has changed, but have the boundaries changed?
The boundaries of the district?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, and that is so unfortunate in a way, because where I live, uh, five eleven North Third Street, a first, second, third, fourth, they are all good streets, but beyond there is a lot of blight. And a lot of people could be really, uh, being helped there. It, it would be fantastic if, uh, the funding for a change was go there, you know? It's, the difference is just too obvious between the people in the historic district and the people that live outside the district. So can we change those boundaries?
Yes, that's, and that's something we've discussed. As we've discussed, changing about, expanding boundaries as well as adding a new district. And so those are all things, um, that are on the, that are on the CRA plan. As well, we've talked about adding in the depot district, looking at the areas between, and then trying to find a way to fill in those areas from fifth to fourteenth street. Because, I mean, on the north side, it's, it's really simple, you know? The only thing that changes outside of the signage as you go north is the signs, you know, the signs change. And then the people, the way the people look change. And so, um, there's a distinct difference, you know, there were, there were some, some of the red lines, some lines of demarcation that were very simple that were put in, that were in place during those times. So, you know, um, the character of the houses never changed, just to look at the people. And so, um, there are some folks who could benefit from it. I think part of, I think we could all benefit from additional information and education on the program. Ms. Roach is, is absolutely right that we're gonna, and, and, and staff is prepared to send out additional information on the new program so that people can be educated on both the process and what the, uh, what the rules are. But again, it's new. So we're, we're working bugs out.
Okay.
And so we just had the first run and, and we're trying to make some more happen. But I definitely appreciate both of you guys for caring about the community and, um, and, and bringing up suggestions for.
Okay.
Come on now. Hey, you, you said, you said really quietly the first meeting.
Bernard Green, eight fifteen Laurel Street.
Yes, sir.
I, I understand that I border on the South Historic District and the Central Business District. Now we're talking about. Can somebody explain to me why that is? And if we are to look at changing boundaries, when would that take place?
So because you're on eighth and, you're on eighth and Laurel, are you on the south side? Are you, are you in CB, are you in central business or are you on South Historic?
I'm in central business according to. I'm right, I'm directly across from third base at Rotary Park.
I, I know where you.
You know exactly where I'm at. You, you, you know who I'm next to. We, we won't go there.
So, uh, we, let's just sit as, that's a longer conversation. But a- again, I think it's, it's no different than on the north, in the North District. You, the line goes down the middle of Madison Street in some places. And so, um, there was a, you know, people could opt in, some people didn't. And then there were some places where I think, uh, you know, people were kind of, people were kind of just drawn in. And so, um, there, there, there's some, some conversation about your street in particular because it's, you're in a, you know, you're right there in a business district, you're near a business district. And you're locked into some of the business rules as opposed to residential rules. And so we're having those conversations, but I, I, we'll be glad to have those conversations with you. It's gonna be longer than this meeting. But yeah.
I, I've never understood. I've only been here two years.
No worry, I'm still trying to understand.
It's just curiosity kill the cat.
I am. Well, they, when they drew the districts up, they, they created divider lines from population standpoint, trying to make those districts kind of congru- even.
A little gerrymandering ones.
Let's just call it a, let's just call it redistricting. Any other questions? If not, it looks like, uh, we are where we, looks like we're in a pretty good place here. Uh, Mr. Holmes, before I go to the agency as a whole, any, any comments?
No, I'm good.
Counsel? I've got Ms. Tucker here. Anything, I'll go to the agency. Do we have any questions from the agency as a whole? Commissioner Ross?
I'm good.
Mr. McCaskill, I heard you know. Commissioner Moore?
Good.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm good, thank you.
I've got nothing else. Thank you, Ms. Shank. Great job. We'll be bringing this back oh, around September-ish for, uh, to finalize it. But it looks like, um, we've got a document that's in place. And so let's try to move forward from there. Um, continually moving the vision. I think a critical piece of it is input and it's input from citizens coming forward so that we can get an idea and have varying views. Because we don't have all answers and, but we want to see, we want to see more things to come. And not stifle anything from coming. And so again, thank you, thank you to everybody. If there's nothing else at this point, Commissioner?
Well, um, shouldn't pass that, but I, I think that was a good idea about the, uh, the lines in terms of how expanding. Cause we did talk about expansion at one point. So I think we want to at least get the agency to start looking at uh, expanding and I don't know how it should, just it can't do nothing but help in terms of, um, removing blight for sure, like. Like, like stated earlier, so.
Yeah, and, and I, and I think part of it is, um, being able to, you know, you, you look at where we were, uh, I think the St. John's Avenue projects, the, what we were doing from an infrastructure standpoint, as those conversations came up and then the pandemic hit. And I think so when you put all that stuff together, that conversation changed as SMNE came on board. Um, and so we were waiting to get the, um, the CRA plan adopted, that happened a few months ago. And so we're in a position moving forward where we can come back and start to address those things with the new CRA administrators. And so I think that puts us right where we need to be. So, um, we appreciate everybody. It's three forty-eight. We'll take a break until four o'clock for our next meeting.
I'll see everybody later.
Sunny, are you, who's handling this one, Sunny or you, Sunshine?
I'm, I'm here, Mr. Holmes.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. The City of Polackus. Second Budget Workshop for Fiscal Year 2223. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Terrell Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Tammy McCastle.
Here.
Commissioner Rufus Borum. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Absolutely.
We have a quorum, sir.
There we have a quorum present. Moving forward to public comments, public comments will be limited to two minutes, so actually we take it on topic to discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? Hearing no one for public comment. We'll close public comment, move on to the agenda. Item number one, facilities.
Um, before we get started, can we talk about the third workshop? It's on the agenda.
Okay.
So I'm requesting a third workshop in August for enterprise and special revenue funds. Um, and then additionally, if we don't get through today's agenda, we can add those on there as well.
Okay.
That's airport, better place sanitation, utility, golf, and ARBA. Sorry, ARBA's not on there, but.
All right, can we? We can do that, like, did last week in August, I think that'll be, it'll be good. We got until September 30th. It'll give us, it'll be right around the time we start doing our milage and everything else.
Um, so first up on here, we have.
So FLC is on the, is the week of attempts, it will be.
Yes, correct, tend to the 14.
Right, so let's, let's give a break in between and let's try to do it that last week, that'll give us time to get back and get adjusted. Go ahead.
Um, so I went ahead and redid the decision unit log and just marked the ones that were approved. Um, and if I missed any, please let me know. But my note said, um, the Jenkins Gymnasium, that is the grant match with the hundred and ninety thousand. The PIO Marketing Media Manager, fifty-five thousand. Do want to note that that does not include benefits. That is salary only at fifty-five thousand. And the Assistant City Manager, a hundred thousand as well. That's not including benefits. And then also the Planning and Zoning Comp Plan Update, which was estimated at seventy-five thousand for the consultant. So as of right now, we have four hundred and twenty thousand approved in decision units. Any questions on these? And we'll go over them more in detail. So for instance, um, Community Affairs, when we do their budget, we can go over their decision unit so that Mr. Cartwright can answer any of your questions.
So, so why don't we add the?
I need to add the benefits. Yeah, I'm sorry. I will. I'll update that.
It'd be basically like forty, probably forty percent normally, right? Benefits will run about like forty percent.
It's about anywhere like twenty to thirty thousand.
Yeah.
And benefits. All right, we can move on to facilities.
And just, uh, where it says Willie, Willie Cooper, it's Willard Cooper.
Oh, did I spell it wrong? I'm sorry.
I R D. It's. W I L A R D.
All right, so facilities. Um, in facilities, we have the Operations Manager, which is a vacant position, and then also the Facility Supervisor and one Laborer. The salaries, or sorry, the Personnel Services are all budgeted at a five percent increase, so you'll see that reflected in the increases. That's not right. I think this one's messed up on the cell too. On, um, the twelve hundred regular salaries line. It's not an increase of a hundred and eight thousand. I'll have to go back and check that one again. I apologize. It's the same thing that happened with the commission budget, I believe. Yeah, it's basically doubling them, so the cell is off. I apologize that I didn't catch that. Um, but there only are three positions in that department. Um, as far as the operating expenses, really, they stayed flat. There was only an increase of four hundred and fifty dollars for the department total. And what we're trying to do in the facilities maintenance budget is really have facility repairs run through this department as well as give them an operating budget to where, you know, they're not constantly waiting on other departments to put in for parts and things like that. A budget for small tools and repairs. So we built that in this fiscal year and budget, um, in this current budget, and it's worked very well for Justin. So just continuing that. Do you have any questions about facilities? Easy one.
No, you can move forward.
So we can move on to cemetery. As you know, cemetery is, um, it's not a special revenue fund, but it does have special revenue that comes into it. And based on the current year, we took a look at what we needed to assess as far as the mowing contracts, the on-call, safe touch, communication services. This one stayed relatively flat, except for a few areas. We did increase the communication services based on the current budget. If you look at actual twenty-one, it was about twenty-three hundred dollars, so we needed to increase that next year for the actual expenses.
Are those, um, restrooms still in disrepair? Uh, at the cemeteries?
Mr. Griffin?
Also, if he, uh, the, what we discussed, possibly, um, using that facility out there as office space so that we can have a person onsite to help, um, you know, families when they come out. Um, we did also talk about possibly using, I guess we have a slab out there that we can use for like a, to get covered, or we can use to have, you know, services onsite at the grave, uh, graveside services and folks can have covering for weather, weatherization purposes.
I have seen, um, requisitions coming through this fiscal year. I know that Amanda and Justin were working on kind of making the facility, usable so that they could meet with, um, the funeral directors and families. As far as I last heard, they were trying to coordinate potentially having Amanda go out there on specific days to meet the families and the funeral directors.
Yes.
I'm not sure on the status of that. That's what I'd have to defer to Jonathan about.
Well, I was scheduled to meet with Amanda yesterday, and obviously that didn't happen because she's not available.
Okay.
But I was scheduled to meet with her to sort of sort all those things out, but it couldn't happen.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that is in the works, and I know that council is on that committee, so.
Now, just go ahead and mention that one of the things that has been looked at is our rates.
Definitely compared to neighboring.
Correct. So. We're.
We're behind.
We're way behind.
Way behind, yes.
She has been doing a good job of collecting some arrearsages. I apologize. She has been doing a great job of collecting some arrearsages, uh, outstanding accounts that hadn't been, uh, paid in quite a while. I think she's got in excess of twenty-five, twenty-three thousand dollars in past, uh, in past fees that were owed from, uh, some of the funeral homes and, uh, and services, but, uh, we were trying to look at sustainability and, but as I said, we, because of circumstances, couldn't meet yesterday.
Right. No, I think the, there was a cemetery task force that was put in place with some of the, uh, the directors. And so it actually worked pretty good as far as getting feedback in the past. It may be an opportunity to, to have, had the conversation with them and, uh, start to talk to them about, you know, what, about rate adjustments, some of the other things, and see if there's some other places. But I, I think in looking at it, um, I, I think Commissioner kind of hit it on the head. Um, the buildings I'm in, you've got, uh, restroom facilities that, to my last knowledge, unless something changed, um, needed to be re-tiled and upgraded. Um, it were, there had been break-ins with homelessness and some other things that were going on out there at one point. Um, and then, you know, the other part is you don't really have a covered area. And you got, I mean, and you have people who come out there and sit for hours. And so, uh, it's an opportunity for us to really, um, have a first impression on people who come in from out of town, and they've got loved ones who they've lost. Um, and, and at least have, you know, comfortable, uh, location for them as they, you know, while they're out there. So, um, I would, I'd like to see something, you know, that we put in the budget, you know, more than the two thousand we got in there for building maintenance.
I'll go out and look and, uh, take Jonathan with me. We'll take a look at, um, at the state of the restrooms and also the office space and try to get.
Yeah, and, and the other thing was he, he'd been, they've been working on replacing fencing. Um, replacing fencing, and it'd been done a little bit at a time. Um, there's an opportunity for us to get it done. Get it done now, let's just see what's there. It may be.
Do you have an idea of where you'd like a pavilion placed?
I don't think you necessarily need a pavilion because.
When I was speaking with Mrs. Tuberville, she said that there's like an existing block out there slab that we can.
Yeah, it's on the side.
So commissioners.
It's an extended portion.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes, there is a, um, a pole barn structure approximately twenty feet by thirty feet. That's adjacent to the old maintenance shop that's in the middle of Oak Hill, um, east. The building itself, um, doesn't have many redeeming qualities, could probably be demolished, but the pole barn is, um, in pretty good shape. Right now, it's got, um, fencing around it, um, and there is another, uh, concrete paved area right next to it.
Yeah, and, and I know you worked on, uh, you, you worked with some, some local fencing companies to start replacing fence and then west, some of the wooden fence.
Yes, sir. We, we did the section that, um, was, uh, behind some of the residences on the north and west and, uh, behind Larry's Giant Subs and the other commercial, uh, but there is a run. There was some discussion about putting a run of fencing up, um, on the Oak Hill East on the northern boundary. Um, but I, I think there's some other consideration that needs to be given to that vegetation, um, and working with our partners at the county. I believe there's a small homeless encampment back there.
Right, so, so let's, uh, if we can, can we, uh, can you shoot us some info, maybe, um, on a, on a, on at least a, uh, two or three-year plan for the cemeteries to get it, you know, up to snuff? Because I think we've been piecemealing it just based upon the fact that there was limited resources budgeted for it. But I'd love to see us put some money in the budget and at least say, hey, within this period of time, this is where we expect to be.
All right, yeah, and we can also tell you what has been completed too.
Right, so I think that'll be good information for the third meeting for the commission to have, and then we can come back and revisit this.
And if we can also ask Mrs. Tuberville about the markers, she was saying, um, getting a quote for markers so that families can say if they're on marker thirty-three, it's easily easier to identify.
Yeah, those were some efforts that, um, her and Justin had talked about potentially doing this year while Mr. Lat was still there. Um, and I had just told them that my suggestion to them would, to be, to get a list together to bring to the commission because they could pull from the Special Cemetery Reserve, but it would have to be approved by commission. But I told them the first step was getting a real plan together. And I know that that was, that was addressed on there though, was the markers.
There's a lot that needs to be addressed right from, from the perspective of do we issue deeds or not? Technically, we're not issuing deeds right now. We're issuing what amounts to a right of occupancy or right of possession. Um, but it's a little bit stilted and it's a little bit cumbersome, and that was part of what we were addressing yesterday was whether just to present a whole program to the commission, revamping some of those things to make it a little bit simpler and also a little bit easier to organize and keep track of. So, but we'll come back with something, uh, and the three-year plan. Try to put some things together. I'll try to get ahold of a couple of the funeral directors and see if we can meet just informally.
Yeah, three, four of them. If we look at the, if we look at the task, if we look at the task force minutes, then you'll see, uh, who have been participating, and I think it's, it's a pretty common group. And, uh, you know, there, I think they'll rally pretty quickly, maybe a Zoom or something. Did, did we know, do we know how, how much, um, well, I guess in terms of what we're trying to construct out there, their estimated cost of what we're trying to construct and we have an idea. You may not have to build anything. That's the thing that Mr. Griffin was saying. You, you already have a pavilion that exists that just needs aesthetics. Right. I think more than anything, that's probably the, the, you know, that's probably, uh, something you could turn into a nice feature just by dressing up, dressing the pole barn up a little bit. Um, and then on the other side, some of it's just, you know, creating a more manicured and presentable area. Um, and that's just detail work. I think it's detail work and having, and, and whatever the vision that comes out of it, that would be beneficial to the people. Need to be excused. Right. Right. Any, anything, any other comments?
There's no water in the kitchen, is there?
In what?
I was, I was asking if there's water in the kitchen. I don't get serious.
I have water in my office.
Anything?
All right, um, moving on to Streets Department. This fiscal year, we did hire and two part-time DOC work crew supervisors. We did move them to full-time, so you will see that change in the salaries. And then also the five percent increase. And what I did with this department is I basically went through and just line by line looked at where they're at currently versus historically and made adjustments as necessary. And.
Just somewhere, I think, um, uh, we may not even need to put anything in there, but one of the things we talked about when we brought the street crews back was having, excuse me, um, the, the, the guys that were on the prison work crew, bringing them in for permanent, looking at bringing them in for permanent hire. Um, we've had one person already identified. He's already been released. Um, we've had one person already identified. He's already been released. Um, and as a potential um, employee, it's just a matter of making contact with him again. Um, but there were a couple of guys that have basically um, kind of been watched embedded through the program by the um, by the, the DOC, the retired DOC officers who were working the work crews for us. And so uh, you know, we're, the plan is for the upcoming fiscal year to have a criteria program with some details presented to the commission so that we can look at, you know, opportunities of hiring jobs, bringing jobs in for, for the guys who've been working on the crews. And they've really done a good job of screening people.
They have.
In the capital, I do have another replacement for the zero turn mowers. This year, we did buy one, so I'm just slotting again for next year to buy an additional. And um, uniform costs did go up a little bit. That's because we, you know, added two full-time employees, so that went up to five hundred dollars. And then we also added more money into the paving materials line in your operating. Sorry, I'm on my next page sometime. And so for as a whole, this department did increase by a hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. The majority of it being, of course, in salaries. Any questions about this department?
This is a good hundred and twelve thousand. It's literally got us to a point where um, the city looked better. Uh, the right-of-way is coming into the community, look uh, a whole lot better. And I think long-term is going to give us an opportunity um, to give a second chance to some folks.
I think the next step for this department too is going to be looking at stormwater and really doing true assessments on our stormwater needs for the city as well.
Mr. Griffith's about to talk to that, about that right now.
Yeah, Commissioners, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that um, historically, we have not funded any stormwater maintenance. Um, it would fall underneath the purview of streets. Um, just the past couple of weeks, we had uh, moved some money around to be able to repair a culvert that failed at Lee and um, Jackson Street and Tierra Woods. Um, that's pretty typical, um, where we don't have a dedicated funding line um, for these types of activities. And the other thing I'll mention is that your current staffing levels, you don't have a dedicated person to run the backup vacuum truck to wash and vacuum your stormlines to make sure that they are maintained and kept clear so that we can deal with these rain events. Um, just a couple of weeks ago, you probably saw some uh, flooding uh, based upon the amount of rain that we got one Friday afternoon. Um, that's pretty typical of a system that's not being maintained. Um, so these are things that we kind of wanted to bring to your attention that we really need to try and find a solution for.
Okay, that might answer the question that somebody had brought to my attention about, you know, coming underneath the Creole on the path area, and there was another area that was flooding or whatever they said to be rerouted, rerouted. Even right there at um, Creole and Hudson.
Mosley.
Mosley, right. It was bad. I took, I took a picture of it when we had that rain event, so. Yes.
Well, Jonathan, I'll tell you that I guess there had been some attempt to maintain some sort of a cleanup schedule, but I guess that had kind of fallen by the wayside, so has that schedule already been re-implemented, Jonathan?
So, we've had to shift some resources um, to get Daniel Nicholson and um, another laborer out on that vacuum truck. Uh, right now, uh, we have a vacant operator position. Um, so Daniel's playing double duty with supervisor and running the sweeper on the state system in the arterials. Um, but we're a little behind in that regard, Mr. Holmes. We, and we really don't have the necessary staffing to be able to handle the maintenance of the stormwater system. When someone does the vacuuming and washing of that system, uh, it's at the cost of not doing something else. Uh, be it uh, right-of-way maintenance, um, tree trimming, sidewalk work, things of that nature.
So do we, so is it a suggestion to bring on a, another operator?
I think that would help, uh, Mayor. Um, and I think that we need to look at budgeting at least a minimum some stormwater maintenance, um, so that we can deal with things like replacing a culvert or uh, another example is the storm inlet that was reported last week um, on Seventh Street. Technically, there's nothing in the budget right now to address that. We have to rob Peter to pay Paul uh, to get it done. Um, and we have relied heavily on grant projects to basically repair and replace essentially deferred maintenance or, you know, just a, a system that has aged out.
Thank you. My bad, Peter's broke. Um, so, so the question is, is there a recommended amount that we need to, to look at placing in um, stormwater budget? So, for, to deal with uh, repairs?
What's realistic, Jonathan, on just the repairs, not counting the salary position?
So a repair is going to run you somewhere in the ballpark of two to six grand, depending on what you're doing. Uh, be it an inlet, uh, top or replacing an inlet or a culvert. Um, you know, just based upon our, our experience past year, I'd say if you put fifty to seventy-five thousand in there, that'd be a good start. Um, the other thing that I would suggest is we've been looking and haven't been able to find anybody to fund it, but we need to do exactly what we did with the utility, which is a fiscal sustainability plan where they identify all our assets, the remaining service life, and they tell you exactly to the cent what you need to budget every year for depreciation or capital replacement. And that would be a, that'd be a good start. Um, and what Lauren or Ms. Shank suggested earlier, um, I believe if you did put a stormwater utility um, assessment in place, that's one of the first eligible expenses.
So. So, so you. So what about, logically, where would we be with a fifty thousand placeholder there?
Yeah, yeah, I second that, that. It's something that need to be done. We don't need to wait till the event happened and we have vehicles and other things becoming in distress, um, causing emergency situations and stuff like that and safety hazard, so.
Unless, let's see if we can shift some other lines around to get to that.
So, so fifty for maintenance and also can we budget uh, an operator? Let's go ahead and put a budget in, even if it's a decision unit, put a budget, an operator in there.
I think it'll be an offset between the um, an operator and another staff person. And then we can figure out where Paul is going, where Paul is going to get the rest of his money from since Peter's going to be screaming.
Moving on to parks. This department has. Jonathan, correct me, it had three positions in here, right?
Hey, you should have the um, supervisor and then two labors.
Yeah, um. I don't know if my file got corrupted, but yes, there's three positions in here, so the top portion is not reflective of how many people are in this department. But nonetheless, the operating did not change. Um, we just kind of shifted duties around with personnel, so between parks and streets. Um, we saw that there was a need to readjust who was in what department based on what they're currently doing. So one of the um, DOC work squad supervisors is actually in the parks department. So I apologize. I'll make sure that we get that fixed. Um, notable changes, we, this year actually took the money that we had for the um, department correction prison group. And we moved that to contract mowing, so you'll see that increase in the top lining in your professional services. And then just going through the budgets and looking at actual expenses, prior year expenses. Um, one thing I did add was I know that the commission has expressed that they wanted to do some repairs at Hank Bryan Park. So I did add four thousand dollars to that um, in order to upgrade, upgrade some of that playground equipment.
That won't do a lot. There.
But that's, I, I truly think that's something that maybe we, we can add to our list to maybe look at our parks and see if we need to replace swings or, you know, get a true two to three-year plan on the equipment. I know the commission's also expressed interest in putting a bathroom there. Um, so.
Talked about that as being an opera expense. So I, I think it's necessary. It was necessary thirty-five years ago.
So. We will.
Yeah, you came close. It's been there for uh, at least well before ninety-two. So I can tell you, it, it's been there since Commissioner Borum had a hot top fade.
Oh.
So, it's uh, uh, I, yeah, I, I think, I think we're at that time. It's, we've been looking at ways to get it done um, through Paul and um, with the numbers are just, everything's unreal right now. But trying to get that done and, and, and working that piece out. Um, and I think, you know, those are the things we got to look at. That playground, that playground really doesn't, that doesn't exist anymore.
Where?
When the, the playground that, that, there was, so on Tenth and, on Tenth and Olive.
There's nothing.
It was, so, so on Tenth, um, on, on the corner, on the corner of Tenth and Olive, no, near, near the old Cavalry Church. There was a, there was a playground there which, which when we came in in twenty fifteen, it was believed that that was silly city property. When further research was done, it was privately owned, had never been conveyed to the city. But the, the swing sets and the playground was there, but it was never, that property was never conveyed to the city. And so uh, once all that was corrected, that property, that park no longer existed, the little, little pocket park.
But it got, it got something like a, 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 what, what, it had like a some.
It had a swing and it had the little merry, little mini merry-go-round thing.
That went on private property most, more than likely.
Well, it was, the intent was for it to be donated to the city as a park, but it was never, but it was never done.
Okay. So now it's a private.
It's privately owned. There's actually an owner who's looking to, to build houses there.
So, so much for that part, yeah.
So it hasn't, it hasn't been operating or maintained in a number of years. And, you know, we, while we're there, we're looking at that list on Edgemore and Hudson. That's some additional property that once was a problem piece of property uh, with, you know, with folks coming in there and dealing in illegal activities. Uh, and it was a gathering place. It's remained empty for a long period of time. Um, and maybe something we look at um, for infill, right? And then we've got the other park, we got the other little park that's not really used over on River, River and Twelfth.
Yeah.
You've got the, you've got the community farm, you got the community um, garden across the street, but the park itself hasn't really been. Um, that equipment is, is ancient and it hasn't been maintained in quite a while.
I do see people there from, from time to time. I mean, I'm, I don't see why they're there, but they are over there using the the little stuff that's, that's there, so um, we just have to make some kind of decision whether we want to improve it or not and move forward. Yeah, we're either going to make it out of a park or just do something different.
Right, and so for a while, we used for that funding to upgrade the parks, including Hank Bryan with the fencing. Um, Booker used for that a few times. Um, you also have to look at um, Shawbuck is another one where you've got, you know, the old tennis courts need to be resurfaced. Um, and the lighting, we had started uh, as a part of what we did, we put poles in place with the lighting there. Um, and that old tennis court and the resurfacing of the basketball court were something that we wanted to do. Um, I think it's uh, I'd like to see us put, you know, another ten thousand in for Shawbuck to redo the basketball court. Um, we can probably, and see if we can get that. And because those kids use that basketball court. And that's the only, I think that's the only court, outdoor court we've got that hasn't been um, restored, yeah.
Would ten thousand do it?
It was. It used to be about ten thousand dollars to redo the, the courts. Fifteen?
Let's, let's, let's put fifteen, let's put fifteen in there at least to kind of get it to where it need to be and cause this, it, it certainly need maintenance. A refresher for sure. And it's you, it's utilized a lot.
And then we'll come back with updates on the other parts.
Yeah.
Miss Val wants at least one pickleball court.
Well, that, well, the, the opportunity for the pickleball, for one, for at least one pickleball court exists there and it exists at Hank Bryan. Those are the two places and um, I think those are the opportunities. Those are things that can probably be covered with ARPA um, pretty easily. Um, but I, I, you've got, you've got a pretty solid tennis, both of those courts are, are pretty solid just for lining and surfacing. And so you can bring those numbers back on that. It was something we could look at. And then that's just a matter of adjusting where some of those lines are.
The next up we have, and it is five hundred and sixty.
Yeah, he, he won't take long. He's got plenty of money already.
Can, can, can we transfer some? Can, can you?
Hey, they arrested, they had two big arrests last month.
Um, one thing I do want to point out that I found through um, working through the positions was that we do actually have the funding for the animal control officer. So I was wrong on that. Um, that was a position that was listed in there and it did have the funding.
I didn't, I didn't ever thought it, you know what? I didn't ever think it.
It was still in there, but um, I thought that I didn't um, slot the funding for it and I did. It's actually in that thirteen hundred other salaries and wages. As your animal control officer.
We got everything, but somewhere to put the animals.
And that is.
Yeah, they actually, I did actually have some conversations with them, so recently, so uh, maybe we'll be able to make some headway there.
We'll, we'll see it uh, two years after your retirement.
Probably.
Yeah, the way it's going, because they're still talking about the design of the building.
Right.
And so, you know, so you're, you're talking about uh, final design of the building. They've got a schematic, what that's going to look like, engineering, architecture, all those things. And then just a matter of coming off the money, so.
Well, I'm going to try to reach out to, I already have Safe Pet Rescue uh, to see if they might be willing to take a limited number of animals in exchange for contribution uh, of some sort. Um, to give us some sort of um, interim capacity. Because as the chief will tell you, it's becoming a problem that's not going to be one that we can ignore for a lot longer and uh, we're going to have to address it.
Yeah, it's bad now. They're just, I mean, that's just for stray dogs, not counting cats or.
Oh, yes, yes.
And everything else, or chickens, or now peacock.
Peacocks.
So we are, we're becoming uh, green actors. So we are, we're becoming green eggers. So. So it's, it's something's got to give.
So we can move on to police operating. If you have any questions, one skin slotted the five percent in all positions across the board. One thing I do want to note, we did add in the professional services. We got a quote for the Verizon fleet, which is the GPS on the cars. And that is added in. That was about nine or ten thousand.
Professional services.
Correct, yeah. Increase on fuel, of course. I will not make that mistake again, I promise. Based on current consumption and where we're at, we took that up to a hundred and fifty thousand in fuel. So it does look like a significant increase in their operating, but it's really not because it was under budgeted.
Time to pull out the bike unit again. Put Toby back on the Harley.
But you know, I think, I, I, I think that would be something, something that we might want to consider too, you know, with, and the bike, with, with the cops and the bike, remember that they have that program? Okay. You're dying, you're dying.
What is the rentals and leases?
Popiers. I didn't itemize that one out.
Okay, I got you.
Cologen water.
So you don't drink city water?
I'm quoting chief.
So. Are we, do we still have the, the recruitment program funding? Is that still in there?
Yes, we have twenty thousand dollars.
Are we, is there, has there been an increase in school? Or schooling for the academy?
No, sir. The cost for the academy, no, sir. No.
She's there. She's right there.
For the record.
Okay.
In that women's self-defense course that you all used offered at one point, what was the cost for that?
The cost to the citizen was thirty dollars. The staffing was done, supplied by us. So it was free staffing, the overtime for the staffing. Some of our defensive passage trainers actually went in and provided that as a service, as well as the self-defense class or the weapons class that Captain Nook provided. It was similar to that as well. So we, what, what, the money that was taken from it would, would basically help buy the equipment to continue on, the mats used for it and the whatever other small materials by that provide for. Um. The weapons class, I forget. It is similar, same thing, stuff that went to the range to help upkeep for the range and stuff like that.
On to the Capitol Outway. The CIP expenses, there is a separate, and you'll see a backup item to match that number of a hundred and eight thousand five hundred that is itemized out. And you'll see that in this graph that's in your packet. The items within there are traffic regulations, speed trailers, which there's two of those. Tasers, each year we upgrade and replace eight tasers. We have thirty-two total. So you'll see that every year we upgrade those. And then we also budgeted for a modular training facility at the gun range. And then also replacing the radar laser unit, which there's fifteen of those total. And we replace two each. Two a year.
What'd you do about the conversation about tag readers? No, that was.
For the radar.
Oh. No, we only kept out later.
Yes.
For twenty-six, twenty-seven, I think, yeah, I think twenty-six, twenty-seven, I think that's, Mr. We're not going to look at that. I don't think that should be, I agree, sixty dollars.
Can you pull that screen up?
It's in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. It's the only thing in that column. It's outlined outside of what was initially the five-year plan. It's the only thing, and it's set aside for replacement radar laser units.
Oh, that's a typo. It should be six thousand, not sixty.
At one point, there was talk about a range, law enforcement range that would basically be funded by or built in conjunction with.
College.
College.
Yes, sir. That's, that talks on that has, we went through with COVID, has stalled quite a bit. The modular unit that she's referring to is still moving in a direction that we need for the training facilities and upgrades to the range that we would have. The question on if the college reaches the point to where they're wanting to come over and use it on a regular basis for the academy training and firearms training. I guess we'll be revisiting it when they're ready to re-approach.
No, no, I'm good, I'm good. So with the, so, so with the tag readers, was that, do you have that anywhere in your?
We had it in for this year. We talked about looking at upgrading and I've already talked to the housing authority and the house authorities going to look at several sites on their properties. So we haven't revisited one away from it for this year. We are looking at it into it for this year to go along with the project that the sheriff's office are putting out so we can be on all the same system.
So we're going to see about having multiple.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So that would be in this year. So you won't see it on the CIP because it's this year.
No, no, I wouldn't be on the CIP, but I was trying to make sure there was something that was included in, in the, you know, in our funding opportunities.
We are, we are looking at the planning and we are reaching out to those partners that we all discussed where it would be beneficial.
And has it attracted, been tractioned there?
Yes, sir, very much.
Okay, okay, good.
And that's something we would add on here. So as we get these assets, you know, we do the life cycle.
Oh, good, great. All right, this is a good stopping point for us. We'll say, we'll, we'll save fire, we'll save fire for next time. And now. We'll see you back here again, same bat channel. So bring Peter and Paul with you. Peter may be in trouble, but yeah. No more Robin Hood. So it's a good stopping point for us. I think it what was your, what were you looking at? A pure balance on this for the whole budget? Or were you looking at any pushing reserves?
For ongoing expenses balanced, for some one-time expenses, we may dip into the reserves. But it depends on what we can accomplish this year, moving some potential facility repairs to ARPA, or sorry, moving the eight hundred megahertz radios to ARPA. And then using that reserve to do some facility repairs this year.
Let's, let's see if we can minimize the dip or to zero. So any closing comments as we get ready to pull up?
No, we just want to thank you for coming in and, and doing your duty while you were under the weather mayor, mayor. So we appreciate that.
We commend you this, you know, this time.
I'll take it this time.
Give him a purple heart.
So again, good job, good job to staff. I think good conversations today moving forward. The thing I like most about it is the fact that we're not just looking at next year, we're looking into the future long term. And resolving a lot of the issues of the one-person departments and also the areas that have been uncharted. So let's just keep moving forward. Everybody stay safe.
Including you.
I'm going to say that. So. Again, thank you, Mr. Griffith as well.
No con clay for you.
Ms. Jones, Ms. Grant, Ms. Walsh, having quiet today. So again, thanks, everybody. Have a good day. We stand adjourned.